What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're looking at playing. The weaker portion of your suited aces from out of position.
On that last one, I'm just noticing a thing which is that we have to be really careful on trips because the solver really respects them and it seems like the value betting range then is is the trips and bluffs and against trips and pair faces is a bluff catcher. We've seen that in three hands so far.
Yep. Check, check on the flop.
Hmm. I'm happy to keep checking this one down. That seems like a good hand to protect with.
He's gonna have some like Jack ten, King ten stuff that you might be able to get value from. Oh, I guess he will have some King Jack sometimes. I don't know, man. I might start betting here, looking for two streets with a hand like this sometimes, but checking seems good.
I think sometimes it's fine, but I think we have better aces that are better to get value with. Like we checked some frequency of ace, eight, ace nine, ace jack.
You definitely do. Yeah, and you saw that in the response. Yeah, these little, these little suited aces are definitely protecting that checking range. You just don't see them like waking up.
Now you do.
I think you go like, I would go mucho grande, yeah.
One fifty?
I think it.
Do X. What are we on?
Uh, well, okay, so think about this for a second.
I don't think that's.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm kind of thinking back because he, he's taking a check, check line, checked like maybe you go like small or check again.
Yeah, maybe.
Our value targets are like good queens that block the Broadway or like aces that check all the way down, right? Those are our value targets.
Nah, you do go kind of big, kind of big.
Five.
Yeah, he's just in a weird part of the range that you're gonna have a hard time extracting any money from, right? This is like the floor of the open.
Oh, they fold for me.
Yeah, it's fold for me.
Arnie, Arnie, we've seen you play. You'd never fold this nine.
Ace side, oh, uh, yeah, I ace nine, ace ten, early position if, you know, there's lots of aggression. Behind you, yeah, I.
We've seen you, Arnie. You can't get away with that anymore.
I would play check here.
Okay, are you gonna call it down? Oh.
Pretty much.
It depends. I mean, I'm definitely calling at least two streets.
Two streets, huh?
Yep, would call this.
They've called this, right? And then.
Although you see it's not worth much. It was only worth three bigs, which is not encouraging.
Oh, what is he doing?
He bet small.
Again, he's doing it again.
There's still Broadway. There's still hearts out there.
You don't get to fold a small, small.
I have a king.
Although that one is already indifferent.
It was mixing, right? You guys saw.
We, yeah.
Do you, do you block ever here?
Why? No. On a seven, six, there's no.
I mean, equity did shift.
What river size did it like on the last one?
He's checking.
On the ace six.
What?
Uh, it went like slightly large, I think over fifty.
Seventy, seventy-five percent was the size.
Yeah, something like that.
Like the five point five.
Exactly.
All right, cool.
Yeah, open this. Easy check.
I don't want to check all this pretty much all the way down.
Oh, yeah, it starts.
Oh.
That's a little scary sizing, but you do, but you definitely call that.
Yeah.
There's that.
Easy.
It's the sizing that people are supposed to do and they don't really.
Yeah.
This board goes check, check a lot.
I agree, Danny. Like, this is a weird line because like you don't see a lot of like big bets like that on the flop. You usually just see small and then you definitely don't see a lot of small bets after a big bet.
It feels like he knows we have a weak ace and he's just like.
Yeah.
Adding some few.
You're right. He's got like Jack ten of spades here and he's like, oh, I need to get a call.
I think he has ace queen.
He honestly might have Jack ten. Like what goes big bet, small bet?
Mainly fold, mainly.
Well, pocket fives did it last time.
All right.
It's similar. Oh.
So we're definitely check folding this if, uh, yep.
Always.
And he just had us the whole way.
Open?
Yeah.
That small bet, off to use that.
Call. Not gonna raise.
Easy call. Hmm, weird turn. Check again.
I would check. I don't really see Meriden.
Just keep calling, right? We have the worst days.
You definitely call this because you have straight outs.
Yeah. Ah, it starts?
No.
No.
Eh, do we dunk? Now that's the question.
I'm thinking about.
Uh, I.
No, 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 no.
I don't know, man. I kinda.
Not a hundred percent.
Uh, I do kind of like donking because he really did polarize the turn big time. So I mean, he's repping like a set, two pair.
He's thinking of check ace king.
I think he checks a lot of that stuff, man. So I definitely do want to donk. I'm just curious how big we go. I feel like if you bet ten, you're just letting him off the hook. So. He.
I think it's too much.
Fifteen seems reasonable. I just don't know if it's a solver thing, though.
I don't think it is. No, no, it's bad.
Yeah.
And the bigger you bet, the worse it is.
Yeah, I guess he's supposed to bluff there sometimes, but I don't know.
It's pretty hard for us to get there with a nine, I guess. Might be one of the few that we have. Or a four.
Uh.
Bet here?
I think we're gonna bet small, bet like third pot.
Make it two streets or just check again.
Or maybe more like fifty percent pot.
I think with the ace of spades here, we're gonna be more inclined to bet, right?
I think.
Uh. Especially after you check back. Oh, still a check?
Yeah.
I was trying to work through mentally if like you want the spade or the heart. Like, uh, would you be more inclined to bet if you had like club diamond?
I think you want the spade because if the spade comes, you can kind of bluff, but you got top pair, so doesn't really.
Yeah, it doesn't matter when it's the pair, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't matter when it's the pair, but I was just thinking like in general because like do you want to be blocking the continues or do you want him to like have some looser continues that you can get value from? But it checks, so I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. Kind of supports that, um.
Though again, it doesn't really matter if it's the pair because like if he has ace three of spades, he's calling.
Yeah, the nine of hearts is relevant, though, because it's the back door.
Yeah.
At least for the flop.
So.
All right.
We're gonna bet now.
You gotta bet at some point.
Well.
That, uh, I don't know, the six is pretty bad for us. He could have just.
Well, I will, I will say is.
If we're gonna bet small.
His check down range does contain a lot of six X, so maybe you do check. I don't know.
But he also has pocket fours and.
I don't see much six bigs in this range. We gotta bet one street for value.
I think three and a half is good. Small, five and a half.
I don't get that small. I mean, we gotta get an ace as fade, no? But okay, sure.
The tiny size wants to get called by King high, maybe the big size.
Now.
Well, you've stepped in it, Louis. So go get the hose, wrench your shoe off. I don't need you tracking that through the house.
I'm sorry, but.
It's probably just, we gotta, I don't know, it's tough.
I think I'm gonna.
I'm gonna pay him off here.
I think I'm gonna keep this thing and walk right to the bed.
You better clean those shoes up before you come in on this carpet.
I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. Oh, we have the spade. We have the spade.
Man, I'm folding in game.
The ace of spade doesn't matter.
We're black betting. Okay, say he's from Brazil. He's like.
This guy's just like.
In the chat, he's like, vamos, vamos, and then he, he, he like, thank, 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 and then he does that.
At the last second.
And then he's like, vamos. And then giving you like a gift for the Brazil flag.
Yeah, he pulls a Brazilian flag out of his pocket and starts like waving it.
You gotta call it a little bit more often, right?
Oh, man, I don't know, dude. I'm, it, it, okay, it's gonna be indifferent. It's gonna be like forty percent call, sixty percent fold.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he's from Brazil. He's like, vamos.
Have you guys been watching the man at all?
I have a, I have a little bit. I watched that, uh, that head, that heads up spot where there was a four liner and the guy jammed top set over top two pair.
Whoa.
And, uh, it's an interesting hand because the one guy who had top two pair sits there for like five minutes. Tries to angle the guy to get like a reaction by like reaching for his chips and doing all this like kind of scummy stuff. And then he finally just sighs and puts his chips in and loses.
Oh, oh, yeah, that was the ace eight and.
Yeah, ace eight, pocket eight.
And then pocket eight, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the guy was kind of scummy about it. He's like, I'm sorry it's taking so long. I promise I don't take the song.
I was surprised he called because he made some big folds earlier and that was right, right, a break, right? They went to break and they were.
Yeah, yeah, it was the break in.
He pointed, he knew it.
He's over there trying to angle the guy was the thing I was laughing about.
Man, can you imagine being at Rigby's table? What a dream. Bet small.
Paper.
I would check here, no?
Heck.
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say it mixes, but.
When we start betting our aces, they're like ace jack or better? Or are we just trying to get him to put money in the pot?
What do you say that again, Arnie?
Well, when are we gonna bet our aces for value there, right? So ace jack? Or are we just hoping that he's gonna put money in the, in the pot or just gonna call him down?
It's not about the absolute strength of your hand. It's just the, uh, it's just how you handle out of position pots. Just because you have a strong hand doesn't mean you always bet out of position. Often like when you're out of, when you're out of position, you're gonna be betting like somewhere between fifty to thirty percent of the range. Doesn't really creep up much more than that. Um, there's a couple other things. It's just, it's more efficient to extract value with check raising. It's, it's just easier to build pots that way is how I think about it.
Yeah, but are we even check raising that much?
You should be. I mean, forty percent, thirty-five, whatever it is, it's pretty.
See, I get that we wanna, you know, we're not gonna have an ace every time, but you know, we do wanna build a pot with our good hands.
We're not gonna raise a gallon. But it's like you don't, but that's the thing. If you want to build a pot with your good hands, then you're left with a checking range, which has a huge door on it that says bluff me out of this pot. I have shit. And like, and the solver is just like absolutely not willing to do that. It is not willing to take like pocket queens and say surrender no matter what because like that just gives too much up to your opponents.
Yeah, I was speaking generally, Louis. I wasn't necessarily speaking about this scenario. I, I wasn't sure if you're gonna check raise a super dynamic.
Right, because the cutoff's gonna have a lot of continues on the ace nine, five. They're gonna have a lot of nines.
Equities run close, like their range has, uh, you know, is more condensed than ours. It's missing like pocket aces. But it's actually, it's missing some of the bottom stuff. Like they don't have ace suited, I don't think. They don't have a couple of weakest king X. They don't have some of the weakest offsuit stuff especially.
Double flush draw. Having a ten of spades, I would polarize.
Yeah, not really. It's small again.
Yeah.
I see like zero merit almost in betting small. Like, why, what, what's the theoretical backing there on a board that dynamic?
I think it just defines your hand too much in solver land.
I think it's really the general motion for this.
That doesn't mean anything. Why, though?
It feels like we're always playing very cautiously slash we're pot controlling a lot. Okay, yeah.
That's a little bit better.
So it's like, yeah, so we're just being cautious. That's why we just bet small two streets, two streets, right?
And especially in solver land, we're like, he's supposed to have flatted some ace king off at some frequency. It's like our ace tens have to be worried about his ace queens. His ace queens have to be worried about our ace kings.
Exactly. Thing is, that's a super strong brief lock because we open from.
Exactly. And so we're kind of like Spider-Man miming each other here.
Yeah, we're, we're supposed to be the strong one, but most of the time he shows up with like the nuts.
And we know, like solver knows that he over realizes in position. It's like, it's not really in our interest to start building a big pot on the flop. When we know by river, we're often going to be holding a bluff catcher and we're gonna be facing polarized rage out of position, checking to him, letting him jam, and then figuring out what to do, which is not a profitable situation.
You definitely see some of this stuff on check, check flops where like you can absolutely just go absolutely bananas on the turn with your bet sizings, like.
I think that's more like single raise, like in position versus big blind.
No, 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 you see it in these arrangements too, like EP verse like, uh, late position flatters. Like I, I, I've put some of these sims somewhere. Some of these is like an example. Before.
Maybe it's because of the ace high.
Sorry. And then you like start blasting turn?
Yeah, well, so like on certain textures, if you have a check, check on the flop. Um, and you get like a blankie card typically, um, you'll, you'll see like some really, really polar betting. Like, uh, if you're, if you're a hundred big blinds deep, you'll see like three X pot and crazy stuff like that sometimes. So like, I, I don't know if it's like a function of how dynamic the board is, and if you get called, you're just gonna get blown off your equity sometimes on the river.
That's exactly right. My prediction is that's gonna be kind of like Jack ten, two tone type of boards where like we are going for a lot of check raising. And we, we were denied the chance to and then we like.
Well, and like, for instance, on a run out like this, on a run out like this, where the seven completes a straight, two straights, it completes a flush. Um, if you check here, the guy has infinite value at this point and he has infinite bluffs. Like he can literally just jam his entire range into you, I think. If you were to over polarize the turn and have to play check on the river. Which you'll have to, you'll have to do sometimes, right? Like, uh.
Yeah.
Also on the turn, it's like if, if the turn is a complete blank, like you're saying, then, uh, because flop went check, check. And we have the strong check raise component of our range, but he's like not checking back sets really or two pair that I, I don't think.
No, he's not really, right?
Occasionally, but so he's like pretty capped and we're theoretically not, uh, so we can just start going ham, but.
Well, that's the power of checking in those scenarios. I, I don't think that rule applies when it's ace high boards. That could also be, uh, something that like I'm just understating at this point.
I think it might. It's just the jack like brings so much and like now he can still have ace jack that could have checked back and now it's like the nuts, right? So we can't just go too ham.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I, I follow that, yeah. So we're on the turn. What did you do? You played check, check?
No, we're on the flop.
Still on the flop.
Oh, sorry. Brain fart. You're on the flop. You played check, you play call. Play check.
Oh.
You kind of don't like it, but you have to play call, I think.
Fifty-five, fifty-five. What kind of hand is he doing that with? Like he's not polarizing, he's not downsizing.
It's a little polar. I mean, that's like sixty-six or something, isn't it?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five twice. Half pot after.
I think, uh, the deuce of diamonds is just such a static card. It doesn't really like change either of your ranges.
Yeah. And then.
Check cry. Check live.
Had to think about that one. So what are the stuff? Should we be betting if we're, we're checking all of our aces on that flop there for, we're betting?
Ace king, ace queen, ace jack. You never go wrong if you bet or check rates.
All of the hands that you're thinking of, Arnie, they're gonna bet like thirty to fifty percent of the time.
So are we gonna be more inclined to be betting our lower equity hats?
No.
No.
Just checking everything.
No, no, you're still, you're still, you know, value betting hands that you think get called by worse. You're just never doing it a hundred percent of the time. Like pretty much any hand that you might bet in position a hundred percent. You need to bet out of position like sixty percent or something.
Something like that.
Yeah.
You don't have like range bets out of position.
Yep.
Like, like you do from late position verse like weak capped ranges.
Also, you have to keep in mind the positions and play. You open from a, a very, very tight range. And the guy who calls you, the guy who calls you, he, he's like taking white gloves to pick you apart because you're really strong. So he's even stronger sometimes.
He's, well, he's more condensed, right? Like he's missing, he has less ace king. He has a little bit, but he has less than we do. He definitely has less aces. But he also has less like low offsuit aces. Like he's not flattening you with like ace nine off, ace ten off. He doesn't have this at all.
And then zero percent.
Wish I could find games like that. Kept your drawing. How do you think this would? Yeah, you wish you could find games like that. Exactly. So like, how, how do you guys think this would shift? When you're playing an opponent who's flatting Jack ten off and a seven off and all sorts of garbage that they're not supposed to have in range?
I don't know. It kind of depends on how much you expect him to stab because like, you know, they'll, they should never be calling a bet on the flop with Jack ten off on like ace eight, six. But if they'll put any money into the pot, if you check, then I think it's pretty valuable to check. Like if you just give them a chance to stab one time, even if they just want and done it, like I'm very happy to put my one third pot bet from Jack ten off. That's just like hugely valuable to me.
We'll just call here.
On the flip side, I want to barrel those guys more because they're just too weak and they can't, usually they'll have to fold by the river.
Right.
So like, how do you find the balance?
All in? Oh, check. And then once he caps himself, it's a lot easier to bet.
And we have a good, like we have a good ace here. It's different than ace six.
Well. Still should be checking. Not raising or calling? Bob is just calling.
I don't know. The tiny bet's weird. Yeah, okay, we can click it a little.
Yeah. Tell you what, we're gonna raise it. Ah, it folds.
Just had nothing.
Ace three. Hmm.
So this texture is one we bet the most, um.
Why?
Right? Like we saw that we're betting the, the paired boards where the pair is like ten or higher, the card that's paired. Is one that we're betting small quite a bit. Well, not a lot of ace a sports in there. More queen, queen and jack, jack and stuff.
It's a seven. First one we see. And then if we look at the twenty percent bet, maybe. It says ten. It says jack. It says four. There you go. I want to go very small. On these kind of texture. Yeah, we bet them a lot. Okay, so what if we rank them by the one we checked the least? Trips. Trips. Ace king ten. Queen, jack nine. Ace six, ace five.
King ten, king jack.
So a lot of pair boards. It's almost all pair boards, right? And then it's like middle high cards that are connected, like queen, jack nine, for example. Okay. Well, there you go, Arnie. These are the boards you can bet more often.
I guess. Check call turn and figure out the river.
Yeah, makes sense.
Well, that's a good one.
Bet small or bet six? What are we gonna get called by?
Or pot it. Maybe a pot, hopefully get called by a nine.
Hmm, close, yeah, that's right.
Or king high. Or tens. He didn't call a ten there, did he?
He didn't, no.
Nah.
But your opponent might.
He made a good fold.
So a pair board. So this is the spot where we can bet a little bit more often, right? So we go with the twenty? Yeah.
I guess not on, I was gonna say the paired board with an ace is not one we saw on that list that I remember.
It was like ace, ace, something, right? Not ace. Not like.
Yeah, like queen, queen, five.
Because this guy could easily have his queen. Let's see if he has it. He's, he's getting in my head with these turn sizings. I never know what to expect. So.
Yes, if you're here in game, it's like you're hating life already.
And he's even supposed to polarize even more sometimes. So like, I think it's too easy to play against this bet. We're gonna make him bet big. Oh, all right. We're still gonna call, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think we call turn, call turn for the river.
Queen to call. We have ace king. But it's not enough.
Check. Let's hope he doesn't dump it. Oh, he dumps it.
Of course he's gonna dump it. He polarized.
And then, ah.
So when he huge bets the turn now, it's like, uh, the SPR or his sizing, it's like harder for him to bluff river, right?
I don't think so. He's been doing that a couple of times now. There's an, he doesn't seem to have any issues jamming this river. So we don't have a spade.
Just good, I think at this point.
He gonna call, I guess.
He said he's got a queen, I guess, or bust a flush draw, really. Right, so.
Or just a better ace.
Maybe a better ace. Do we?
Yeah, I think we're gonna, we can fold river.
Do we hate the ten enough to fold? I don't think we can fold here after calling turn.
We've seen, we've seen a bunch of these, we've seen a bunch of these on, uh, on trips boards, like we're, we're basically calling turn, hoping for check, check. We're not hoping to face null and bet on river.
Yeah, okay. Are you gonna fold every ace? Are you gonna call with like an ace six?
Yeah, because he could be polarizing with.
Because maybe, maybe.
He could be.
This now. Like the ten is probably not great because he's, he might wanna king ten, he might wanna.
Yep. Yeah, the ten is probably bad, yeah. So maybe you do prefer ace six. I mean, you definitely prefer ace five.
Yeah, but what about like ace seven, ace eight, ace nine?
Probably a better call than ace ten.
All right.
You pull those three. We can probably fold this because we, we are blocking some of his blocks.
It looks like folding is a bit weak.
But.
All right, so.
But like top pair is not top pair when there's trips. Like this is not, this is not top pair. This is not even remotely one of the best hands on this board.
All right, we figured it out. The ten is not great, right? You, you gotta call it amazing though, right?
Let's see if we call ace six.
And this is the fourth time that on trips boards, we fold a lot of top pair. Um, but. But.
It's a, it's a real folding. Uh, these, these weaker ones not in range, say they were, I wouldn't be calling, I think. So we're gonna, we're gonna fold plenty of aces. Having a ten and a Jack's pretty bad. Okay.
Fun game of checking. Yeah, the queen.
We just had it.
On the turn, he's saying, I could beat an ace. And we're saying, alright, I call anyway. The river, I could still beat an ace. I guess I believed you now. I don't know.
Exactly what happens, but yeah, it's funny.
I think we're probably just gonna check here. This board sees some larger sizings. So yeah, check or like fifty-five is what I would play, I think.
When we flop two pair, it seems to be majority bet. Almost every time. So we, yeah. Is this a good turn? I don't think so.
I don't know if I'm ready to start checking, though. Yeah, we probably should still, still be betting.
Can we summarize this spot? Do we gotta call two streets every time for sure? And then the third street depend whether the run out is clean or not? Right?
Yeah, yeah, the third street depends on blockers and, and the run out.
If, if it's a pair board, we call never. If it's like flush completing, straight completing, we're probably not gonna call. And then. And if it's like brick, brick, we're just buckling up and calling the whole thing?
Wait, on this? Oh, okay. I was like, this is actually a great hand on a pair board because we like block all the boats.
This, this here, we're gonna call two streets minimum. Do we barrel this turn? No, we don't?
I could see another small, be a small one. Either small or check.
I would, I would polarize if I was to bet again. Not that.
But this hand's not really polarized, that's the thing.
So it's a check? No, we can polarize.
All over.
Move everything again. So flexible. This is where you, the thing about your opponent, right? And like their tendencies and what will make you the most money when the solver says everything works.
Yeah. Think we have to go for value. No, we gotta keep on betting.
Is it a jam?
No.
Or is jam too greedy without a spade?
Way too greedy. Yeah, I see thirty-four or fifty-eight here.
I guess we bet and then he jams, we fold.
Well.
Or recall, we're calling?
I would call definitely, but is it, is it great? I don't know.
There's a tiny sliver of jamming.
I'll just call here.
Is he call?
No.
Oh my gosh. So greedy.
We don't care about the flush. Surprise, we're all in.
So greedy. I guess he's got to call a lot still for the only two X.
You gotta call here.
Yep.
Great. Check, check. Now I bet off pot here, no? Or check again?
This is a weird one, right? Because like a lot of his stuff that like kings and queens now on his end are feeling better. But I don't know if we exactly want to go for a check raise. What is our? Yeah, because he'll probably bet maybe a small bet with, yeah, like you said, kings, queens, maybe jacks. But I think I kinda like half pot. Alright, check again. He goes.
You gotta raise a little bit, no? We're gonna be civilized and just call?
Check. Probably we're just gonna check our entire range here. Bruh.
Is it call?
Easy call. I think so. Oh, it prints bigly.
I mean. Uh, check.
Check.
Never.
Ever check. Oh yeah, I guess it's the pair, pair board.
Uh, even that, pair board is gonna be a bit small.
Good old one point five into seven.
We're cautious.
Now we, now we check, right?
Never.
We did our little range betting flop thing and then the eight pairs, if we have tens, we're like, okay, what do I beat now? Really big here, yeah. Half pot.
We gotta bet off pot here. That thing you're. That story is like.
Yeah, now we can bluff with like fives and, and fours, I guess, right? It's just like, it's weird. We don't have natural bluffs here.
But it is.
All in, put it all in.
Maybe, because I don't think he calls anything.
When we're bluffing, we want to save a little, right? I think seventeen is good.
Yeah, that's right. Feels like he's not calling all of it, but he might call this, he calls this with an eight, right? If we stuff it, might wanna fold some eights, right? Might, might fold the backdoor flush as well. Think he always. He called with.
Does he call a flush there?
I think so. He called with one pair.
Oh, he called nine, so yeah, I guess so, yeah.
But I think he's always folding to the jam with this pair, so.
Yeah, it's good. And those like hopeless spots where your, your bluffs are like pocket fours and you're just like closing your eyes and praying, kind of. I've seen that as a theme to like, leave a little back because you just don't really know.
Uh, I think I would check, check again. With ace six, in fact, I think I would bet if I had. What is it? Ace nine plus? Yeah, ace nine. You can, you can even bet here. Just a seven, a six struggle.
Here's the gallon scenario.
Yeah.
Turn complete brick, we start seeing some bombing.
Yeah. Switch call. Tree of spade, oh la na.
Just another check, check. Hopefully doesn't rip it in her face. It's not surprising to see this. Probably just to fold.
No, my goodness.
I can't fold here.
Can you not? There's a flush completed.
I'm gonna pay the robot. There's the flush, but the ace and the queen are on board. It's like there aren't that many combos. King high and like. I don't know, like he checked back flop. Does he really have Jack ten spades?
Certainly.
Just King high, King high. Jack ten.
He has a bunch of spades when he checks back the flop.
And nine of spades. Jack nine would check turn maybe.
He didn't check turn, he overbet.
He can have ace nine. Pocket nines.
He went overbet on the turn.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm saying if he had Jack ten spades, I would expect to flop at Jack nine spades, I would expect to turn check. Not a bet. Or like any nine X of spade.
So we gotta call when we have one spade in our hand.
Yeah, but then our other blocker is gonna be bad because we'll, then we'll have like ace ten off.
Let's play the good blocker, bad blocker game. So a Jack in it then is bad here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems bad.
And a king. Uh, right?
Although a king is good because it's like value.
Yeah. So thinking about our aces. Do we, how do we? How, how do we figure which one we call, which one we fold? Ace seven suited, ace six suited, ace four suited. And then ace ten suited. Ace ten.
Ace four might, might be the best one.
Ace four, we call, ace ten, we fold. Is that how it works? Alright, so we fold here, we fold why? Because the flush completed?
I'm calling.
Okay, and then do we need to call with other hands, other aces? Ace six.
Hold everything.
Also, ace four is. Folding. We need like ace jack is folding, so we figured that one out. Didn't think all the aces would fold and then we call when we have a spade, right? We call with ace jack is then when we have one spade. We call with king, queen, one spade. So that's weird, right? We call with a pair of king more than a pair of aces here.
Yeah, because his main hand is the King high flush for value, right? So if you have the King of spades, it's just so good. This, it seems the spade blocker is way more important than the flo, the straight.
Yeah.
Break straight on blocker.
Whoa, but then, but then we still have King of hearts, Queen of clubs.
King of hearts, Queen of clubs.
And King of diamond, Queen of clubs. He likes the Queen of clubs for some reason. What the heck?
Doesn't want to call an ace.
That one's weird to me. The King of spades I get, for sure.
See the Queen Jack. Ah, look at this. Maybe that has to do with clubs. Yeah, look at this, it's the clubs. His clubs don't block turn barrels.
Why are clubs better than diamonds, though? I don't know. I know, it's just one of those things. Rather call with a queen than with an ace. Like, does it have to do with the nine, the suit of the nine? But then wouldn't we prefer diamonds? Because then we block like Queen nine of diamonds or something?
Can we see his range?
I love that moment of silence where no one knows what's.
I thought my computer froze.
His, uh, his jamming range on river, Button's jamming range?
We're all just pondering.
Usually everyone fights to give out his, his version.
I'm just like, dude, mine's just crickets. That's all I've got. Okay, he has pocket queens. That's an important part of his all range. And it's like a decent, like it's actually a fairly large chunk there. It's not that small. Three combos.
So easy. I have a plan now. We call two streets and if something bad happens like this, we can fold.
Bet small? No, I don't know.
Yeah. It's get edgy a little bit. So we're gonna check. Yes, we can.
Another check.
We can back. Uh, we could check as well because the flush is there.
Oh, no checking.
We don't really check.
Oh, wow.
Let's blast it up.
I would bet, but like, everyone we've seen has had some double checking, not that one. Open.
We can bet a lot here. Oh.
Oh, boy. It's probably just.
You gotta call twice at least. Oh.
I was wondering, I'm like, I kind of feel like we could just start folding.
But why?
The king improves other components of our range a lot. Straight. To where like we don't need to defend this one anymore.
It's a bad turn.
Well, it's a good turn usually, right? But just not for our hand. We have ace king, we have king queen, we have.
He does have some, yeah, he does have some ace king, he does have some king queen, he has some Jack. He still has better aces. Like last time we called down on this, he had ace jack and it's like, okay, he didn't have the straight, but he just like has a good hand.
Even King Jack and King ten. Uh, might be preferable to call to ace five.
So do we call twice here? Oh, I think I, I understand because every time it leads, it's because it's not gonna call twice.
I guess this is probably more favorable for us. Double Broadway, I guess. That's part of the. We're gonna have a lot of two pairs, gut shots, possibly, right? Repairing a gut shot. We just have less air than him on this board. So we push our range advantage with a tiny bet. And it's a. Pretty dry board.
But not what? Five?
It was check, check flop?
Yeah.
I think it's still small. Like a thirty-three.
Check or bet? Check, check, hmm. Got a bet now. Think it's gonna be five. Nope, it's check or that's small. Okay, bucket tens, I mean, we call.
Oh, he paid. Interesting.
By one check, 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 so he has to defend one street.
He doesn't have enough, uh, King X, Jack X, maybe.
Pair board, we can bet small. I don't think he can bet very big on these pair boards.
Buckle up.
Why you wanna buckle up?
Oh.
I see now.
We're, we're good now.
It all makes sense. Wanna lead this turn?
Oh, cool.
Wanna lead it small?
Guess it wants us. To get. We do have quite advantage now that we called him on the, on the. We do have quite advantage now that we called him on the, on the flop.
The weird ones.
Yeah, we're just, when we check call, we're like super ace heavy.
What is he doing?
Makes sense, right? He's, he's, he's barreling his, his five.
He raised our, kind of that.
Or just splitting, or he has like deuces.
We check here or we put it in?
We check, we check and just let him. Go for it, if you want. He has a bluff, he has a bluff for the same hand, Louis.
Okay, but if he has a fine, is he betting?
Probably not, no. Do we think he raises turn with the five, I guess? Maybe a small block bet, see if he goes crazy.
I would go all in or check.
Check or block?
Check is better. Now.
Now we're all in, now we're just all in. What if he has ace nine, though?
Why does it wanna call fifty percent of the time?
Um, cuz like, like I was saying, he probably has aces full or a bluff and. There's no value in jamming in that case, right? We just get screwed by ace nine occasionally.
I thought we had the ultimate nuts, I guess ace nine.
Or, um, or pocket fives.
I wouldn't like, uh, shy away from that because of two hands.
Checking this?
Oh, the ten.
Like a, probably like, uh, check raise, either go for a check raise or just like a thirty-three percent. Or maybe, I don't know, probably with the, the flush draw out there.
If he bet the flop, I think check raising is pretty good, but.
Probably like half pot here.
How do you know he's gonna bet now? And also, I think we have to pick up the lead here, kind of. And go for fifty-five.
No, wants us to go every option, every option.
The rainbow.
Beautiful.
Not the, not bad though, right?
But he shouldn't have that many straights, but it's just kind of a dumb card. Do we block, uh, five? Thirty-three percent or probably like thirty-four or fifty-seven, probably like three quarter. And maybe we could still go fifty-seven.
Yeah, fifty-seven percent.
We suck out on the ace king. I'm surprised you didn't three bet that. Or guess we're just calling.
It's because positions, we open from a very, very wide range.
Yeah, the offsuit will trap sometimes. Hope the blind squeeze or something.
Check, check, eight on.
I'll leave no bigger, bigger.
Bigger. Why you wanna bet so big?
It's the, he caps himself after flop check, check. And now. No, it's more like king X or a weak ace. He won't have, he'll have some weaker flush draws and also the eight of spades is available, so he can have some like eight, nine of spades stuff that. I think he wants to check the. The weaker ones through on the flop.
I don't think he called many kings on this turn.
I think we're fucked now. I don't know if we should check or bet, bet eleven percent. Yeah, just check. Okay. Yeah, cuz it's the weak ace or king X and we, they're both the, hard to have. I guess, we block, one, the board blocks the other. Like thirty-three or half pot? Fifty-five.
I think it's gonna be multicolor here. As long as you bet a lot, when you flop to very bad. Clicking, but how? Does he have exactly ace ten?
Flush draw, maybe. I don't know, he would be doing this probably set of tens, set of fives, maybe.
The good old fives?
The good old fives. He could have ace king off as well and do this.
Okay, so do you click it? Or do you call?
Me, I'm jamming.
Jamming is out of mind, for sure.
I think we click it back, but we probably just click it back.
Making, or both are fun.
Oh, happy days.
This is kinda funny.
He's gonna check, check this.
No, I don't think we're gonna check cuz we took the last polarizing action, which means we have the best aces and that does, this doesn't really change that. We also. But we're gonna like, we have a deep polarizing, our bluffs got there. Like our, like spade bluff now got there, so it's hard for us to have that many bluffs. So we're not gonna check cuz he has no incentive to bet into us when we like either have good aces or flushes.
I agree, so it's, I think if we bet thirty-two percent, it's very easy to jam in a river.
Less, no smaller, smaller.
You guys wanna go small, I don't see any merit.
Oh, SPR of, SPR eighty percent.
You guys are right.
I mean, it's a small difference, I wouldn't get hung up, but.
You would only have like a forty percent pot, no, even less on the river if you, if you bet third before. Um, well shit, his pocket fives got counterfeited, but he's not gonna jam if we check, right?
Yeah, exactly. We gotta do our own betting here.
Oh, nanny.
He calls anyway, what the hell? Well, likely.
Nanny, you gotta send me some action cuz I think you can see the opponent's cards.
Yeah. It's that spike call when they're like, I know you've beat me, but like I don't know how to fold the full house, so I had the nuts last.
We're born, you, you're right. Twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Let's go, we have, we figured that one out. I, I added this hand as a scam for myself and I keep, keep scamming myself every single time.
You can mix it from UTG one, but you're. And even UTG one, like you don't need to open it, man.
This is another scam I put for myself, but.
Nah, LoJack isn't open. Yeah, that's a hundred percent, hundred percent.
Yeah.
Is it a scam under the gun or is it a mix?
It's a scam.
I don't think.
Ah, shoot, we're too shallow or what?
No, it's just a bad hand to play, maybe.
Nah, it's the fucking nuts, man.
You gotta put it in, the nuts, right?
No. No, we saw this before, we saw this before, it's like worth like point one bigs, you have to continue.
You gotta rock and roll.
It mixes call and all in.
He's gonna rock the party.
Oh, my. Give him the solver special.
That's super shocking, super shocking, can we re-buy?
Give him the solver special. You solved yourself right out of this tournament. You solved yourself over to the rail.
In one hand, then slam.
Uh, yeah, you can check, although we did see some liking of betting clubs, so like maybe this bets a little bit.
Now here. Yeah, I don't know.
Still bet a little bit, you're still check a lot.
Probably.
Check sixty, okay, check fifty-five, yeah, great. You continue to check a lot.
Bet big when you bet.
Uh, we bet her and nothing really got there on river. I don't know, man.
Like half pot?
Yeah, like half pot. Yeah.
We can definitely get called by worse.
We call, no?
Check.
I would block here.
Why?
Cuz it goes check, check on the turn, you gotta top pair, so you gotta bet small for value. Starting with nine eggs. It's a four liner, so maybe we just check.
That's the thing, like, it's, it's like top pair no kicker, is that value on a four liner?
Yeah, I know, probably not, just a check, yeah.
I think you can bet like some weak two pairs for thin value. Especially like unblocking top pair, like if you had like, I don't know, a ten-nine or something.
Yeah.
I know in the spots as well, um, a lot of their value range on river is gonna be rivered sets. And so it's kind of nice to hold, uh, one of the rivered card, cuz that keeps them from showing up with like the surprise value on river.
Calling. Agree.
Calling again.
Probably call again, even.
Pretty good river, we're gonna call it off, right? Oh, yeah?
Oh, he could have been barreling king queen. Better is.
Think you gotta call, no? Well, we got.
Contest your hypothesis.
Ace five, ace do, ace ten, ace jack. Made and he's ripping into the turn, the turn is not great.
We might fold ace five on the turn, by the way. I don't know if we have it here. I think we can fold here, if we're probably folding.
Yeah. There's a straight card on the turn.
Yeah.
Oh, you have it.
He just, he just has it.
Yeah.
Well, it makes sense.
Um, solve him, just solve him. Get solved.
Oh, there you go.
And we get. Oh, oh, he hit the sat, though.
There we go.
Loser, what is he doing? Getting it all with tens? We have ace five.
It's like two aces, except we only have one.
Yeah, it's like two aces, man, it's like fucking fish, get out of here.
Just another check. Oh, we're bad.
Although, better fair bet, we blocked the, we blocked the river or the turn straight, so not to worry about it.
Too much out of position on some spots where we don't wanna go two streets.
We lose.
Also, we saw this earlier.
Jack, ace, jack, king ten.
Yeah, on the ace, king, queen boards, we saw that villain was betting ace jack cuz it's just not, it's less worried about running into the straight. That's great when you're betting one, a one pair hand, cuz one pair is not the nuts. Alright, this is the effect of nuts, however. Yeah, we go, we go tiny here.
Ooh.
Think we're gonna probably bet small here.
No, I think it's okay, but small, I think it's also great to check. I don't really wanna check raise it. Very much. Well, now we gotta bet for value fifty.
I would check raise.
Oh, my god.
Yeah, check raise is really good here.
Eee, goes bad. Oh, my goodness, this is my worst.
And now we're on the river and there are seven big blinds in the pot and we have the nuts and we've got.
Check raise again.
This is my worst nightmare, Tim.
Actually, uh. That's why I'd just be more inclined to just a small bet on the flop, try to get a little bit. If we bet half and he has queen jack, would he raise?
No.
Yes.
With a spade? Or maybe?
No. He's just gonna play raise with.
Then, if you think he won't, then we should bet big, I think, like five and a half or ten and a half. Okay, that's everything. So check raise is still viable. Big bet is viable, small bet is viable. Yeah, the whole air ball. Could we see if, if, um, queen jack raises facing half pot? I think with the spade, it surely will.
No. History, there you go. Definitely not, man. The straight on this river?
It's check, 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 though.
Yes, you're right.
Well, if it's raising versus the overbet, I guess it's gonna raise against half pot. So is every combo, if we switch it to bet forty-nine percent for our river action? Is it just like every queen jack? Yeah.
Hmm.
Okay.
So the machine would, will your opponent, I don't know. I'd say no.
I think many will, maybe some. Depends like where.
Like they don't value bet then.
If it's level three, I think they'll raise. If it's level thirty, I think they'll be a net call. Often, but yeah, you're right there. Some of them are pretty nitty.
Seven.
I like it.
Oh, yeah. He, yeah.
Oh.
Really like call.
Yeah, he was not having the.
Well, actually, with ace, ace ten, we can go bigger sometimes.
Thirty-three, let me.
Disagree, we go one. Now, I think we go fifty-five, cuz he, when he just called the one, it's a little bit cap. Still betting small most of the time.
Weird.
Yeah, people don't realize when that, whenever they call the one, they kept themselves so hard. And then when they massively raise the one, they kind of overpolarize.
Yeah, they turn their hands up, right?
No, no, it's the other way around then. If, I, if you bet one, he goes seven big, he's overpolarizing, he's trying to bully you. If you bet one, he makes it two and a half or three, he wanna keep you in, right?
Well, see, I really only have one raise size there, I'm pretty much only raising to fifty percent, which is like four, four and a half bigs, it's in that range. Which is kinda nice, I guess that's in between.
Somewhere in the middle, I couldn't make a read on, but.
Alright.
Could we actually see his strategy there? Like, I'm curious what he's raising. How thin?
He's not raising.
Well, you guys are saying you would raise in position there sometimes, right?
The machine, my, my mind is not raising.
You were just talking about him raising.
But villain, the real villain you're gonna face is gonna lose his mind when he sees one big blind. It's gonna be like vamos, vamos and chat and then, you know.
I think Louis is also like talking more in like, single raise and position spots.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good feeling when you're in position, you bet one big blind and. It's a good feeling when you're in position, you bet one big blind and the guy out of position goes crazy.
Yeah.
Like, okay, let's go.
The war's here as well, sometimes. Oh, ace, eight, seven.
Typing vamos, vamos. It's also nice when you're in position, you bet one big blind and they just fold.
Why do we bet this texture here more often?
Um, two, two high broadways is uh, is really good for us, like the king is very good for us in a way that like ace low, low is not.
Oh, is it? Hang on, Tim. Is it the spot where we don't want to go three, two streets? So like
There's very few gut shots available.
The bad part comes like a queen, a jack. A spade, we're just gonna check it down and then fold sometimes? That's why we want to bet here? Or are we betting for value?
We're betting for value, right? I mean, we're quite high up in range, like ace queen is the best on paired it, not two pairs.
Look at the size we're using. Is it really value?
Yeah, of course it's value.
Hmm.
We don't get to start just going crazy.
When you bet one or two, it doesn't feel like value to me. It feels like uh blockish type of bets.
I mean, we're expecting that he calls with ace nine, right?
Hmm, no, we're expecting him to fold his ace nine pre-flashed.
Ace nine suited? I know. Of course he's calling first. What are you talking about? Of course he's calling, of course.
Yeah, I know, but
I think we call flop. Uh, well, we can fold at some point in this hand, but flop is not where we fold. So very bad turn card. We can check fold, I think. And oh god.
Oh, the small sizing. I don't think we can ever fold, can we? Not so fast, he said.
Yeah, I don't want to fold this hand.
Really good price.
He says, we all know you're beat there.
Does he have like queen, ten of hearts or something just ridiculous?
No, 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 no. He's just trying to get four more. He's like, ha, ha, ha. Uh, he's just, this is just like he's, he's taking a piss.
I am always folding here.
He's like, uh, I'll take four more big lines, please, good sir. And then we're like, sure.
No, don't do it. Don't, don't indulge him. Come on, we have hands
The machine knows, the machine knows, the good sir dynamics here.
Yeah, he's like, I heard you wanted to fold. How about four?
Yeah.
You can, you can pay four.
Play like four.
He's gonna jab.
Take him all. Alright, easy fold.
Easy fold, yeah.
Jig is up.
Okay, ace ten with the tennis paid in your hand.
I'll leave. Maybe.
I'm
Might still be a We're probably calling with the spade.
It's a huge bet. This is full pot.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna look at my cards and if I have a spade, I'm gonna say, I'm very sorry to my investors, but I have the spade.
I, I think we're still folding river when we have the spade.
No, you folded.
Ten.
I ain't.
I think so.
I ain't.
It's just so tough, because a lot of the time it's blur dependent in the machine. In there, it's in there. What's the EV? How about am I torching?
Look at
What's mixing?
Queen suited, look at ace queen suited, ace jack suited. It's not a my question of
Because the value of the kicker doesn't matter, I mean.
It's a question of blocking the flush, so we block
Kickers are fake, man.
Yeah, can you show the EV of the ace ten with the spade?
No.
Yeah, stretch.
Why not?
No. It's wonderful. Look at this point.
Yeah, it's good.
Wow, yeah, it's a lot. Can I um, can I put a hand history in the chat uh, talking about how small bets are so nutted and they get a lot of respect?
Sure.
Uh, low jack, R5, forty bigs in the tournament, hero calls button with six, five suited. Uh Lob was king, jack, four, he see bets like twenty-five, I call. With uh, three to a straight through to a flush, I figured I'm gonna go where I'm at on the turn.
What are you doing, Tim? King, jack, four, you got a six and a five. What are you bathing for?
I had a
Good float.
It's a
I had a read. I had a, I had a read.
You had a read.
Wait, how deep did you get? Forty?
Like forty, yeah.
Jesus.
Fine and good.
He turned Yeah.
What was the flop sizing?
Twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah, it's good. I, it's good. You have position and you like, it's a good float. It's just good.
You don't have position. What are you talking about?
Yeah, I do. I'm buttoned. He's in low jack.
Oh, I, I thought low jack. Oh, okay, I see. We're in position. Flop, you see that? You are gonna
And turn on the king, he checks.
Hang on, ambitious flow.
Oh, yeah, that's super ambitious.
Is this good? As the machine says, it's okay.
And, no, I mean, don't, don't, this
I'm pretty sure the machine will like it.
The machine
The machine is probably gonna raise more often than call, but I'm
Button, look at the button, it should be in there. Yeah, it's in it.
Yeah, yeah, you need to be in there.
And then the flop is king, jack.
I've, I played a hand just like this the other day where I backed toward the flush.
Well, on turn, he just like, he did the old guy. He like flicked his, flicked his cards four times. He stared me down and then eventually he mucked and he said, you played it just like you had a king.
You had a backdoor flush, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
You had the diamonds, he said.
I don't remember which one it is.
You didn't raise.
Yeah, yeah, I knew you could raise. I actually thought it would be more of a raise than a call, but it's both.
Okay, so hang on, hang on, hang on.
Checks, you bet thirty-three.
It seems insane.
Yeah, especially live where you're just gonna like own them a lot.
Eight, seven suited is not doing it, right? But the
Well, that makes sense. There's no connectivity.
Five, four.
The, the bigger the gap between your connectors and the card, the fewer turn cards give you a straight draw.
Exactly. Like there's, like, I have a straight draw on a two, a three, a seven and eight.
Very ambitious call.
Well, no, it's a, it's, it's silver.
You have like a, a ton of outs to a good draw.
Oh my god, it's over approved, except I'm supposed to go big, not small, but I just felt like at bottom of range here. I didn't need to bet big, because like I wasn't even trying to get him to make a big fold. I'm trying to get him to fold like pocket eights, like a weak ace, like I wanted to fold like ace five. You know, something just like trash.
Notably, we're checking, checking like every jack here. Just only want to go big.
And he says that he folded ace, jack.
He folded ace, jack, geez.
That's what he said.
I wouldn't
That's awesome.
Believe him. I wouldn't
Yeah, he's probably lying.
I do, this is a very like serious type old guy. He's like a chess player. He's like, he's decent in some ways. Parts of his game are quite good and parts of his game are quite nitty.
You mean, if, if he's folding here is super weak.
But like he, but like again, other, other parts of his game are strong, like I've, he has like, he knows how to four bet light. He can read like when players are more likely to have like three bets and then like attack them appropriately, like there's, he's not terrible um, at all.
Oh, okay.
But he's nitty here.
That's quite nitty though, right? You got second pair and then top pair pairs, right? Like
Yeah. And um and uh, and the second time that I pulled some ridiculous crap on this, on this guy, he stared at me down again and was like, you can't have it every time and then folded.
He's letting you know like the next time he's gonna call.
It's amazing.
So you better have value the next time.
I was like, cool, like I have value half the time, so like it's cool.
Uh, yeah, it's like, it's like a leak where if you think you're no good, you just like don't want to put another chip in, even though it would obviously be correct to call river, call turn and assess the river, because like
I'm, and I'm surprised looking at sulfur that it's, oh, Louis chose the eighty percent sizing. Okay, against eighty percent ace, jack is only worth one big blind. But Louis forced it to do like the thirty-three percent sizing. I mean, like ace, jack is just printing.
Oh yeah, for sure.
It's worth six big blinds.
For sure, but I, I went eighty because he was just betting eighty every time here.
Yeah, yeah, sure. That's just such a ridiculous fold. Against eighty percent, I can imagine folding. Then it's like, what do you, what do you beat?
You should have never folded.
But yeah, there's the, there's the why so much guys, but then I found the why so little guy and that's a cheap buff. Cause like, really, do you think he folds? What? I need him to fold like one third of range here? Do we think he folds one third of range, like ace highs, mid pairs? Yeah.
Yeah, I don't really like your size on this. I would just bump it up. I would, I wouldn't pick eighty. I would go like sixty.
Yeah, I mean, fair enough. I felt like I was gonna get the job done.
Yeah, but
That was
Do you bluff enough at this size?
Further bluff.
Your range, you're like, eh? I have the good spot against a good guy. It's a decent spot today. But your range is like it wants to size up a lot. Your king in your range. You're never gonna bet really a king that small. Unless it's like you're trying to level your, your opponent. That's maybe where you got him, yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to sneak, get a couple more big blinds for him, right?
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. But we were talking about milking. And people just kind of like really
Yeah. Do we have anyone with more hands?
Louis, pull mine up from the, from the Discord or I can pull it up. It's, what channel is it? I didn't get a ton of traction on this one, so I'm really actually curious to hear some thoughts. Uh, ICM channel. Can you get you far down harder? There it is. Oh, there's, it's under the aquarium. Level five, load, load down. Up. Bam.
Oh, I'm a little behind here.
Yeah, I haven't been super active in the past couple weeks either. Uh, yeah, this one. Uh, I put up the HUD stats because they're relevant. Um we're in the money, you know, one oh nine. We have got a guy three betting from low jack. He's running eighteen, twelve, five over three hundred
Is your one oh nine at PKO?
Nope.
There's no way. It's genit, Tim. You got folding digs, you got jacks. I'm never folding.
Eighteen, twelve, five.
I know.
Yeah, it's probably good.
I know, but the thing is, on the other hand, look at your stack depth. And look at the quality of your hand.
Okay.
I'm looking at it.
Hmm, getting it in for twenty with jacks is never gonna be a bad idea.
Uh, what if his range is basically jacks plus? Then how do we feel against jacks against that range?
What if, like uh, you're wrong?
Like even if he has tens, even if he has nines, is that enough?
What I see here is like this guy's just out of line, he's opening too wide, right?
Kind of, but we have twelve hands on him. We have three hundred and forty hands on the other guy.
Yeah, no, I get it. But
It's like, I don't know a lot about the opener here.
Hmm, is slander man potentially aware enough? That fish is wide and doing anything about it though, Louis?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if we can, if we can assume that.
Like, I think if, if he was the kind of player who adjusted and, you know, took shots at other people when they were too wide, he would not be running eighteen, twelve, five or almost three hundred and fifty hands.
Think if you have like pocket nines here, it would be closer. But I don't think I'm running pocket planes.
Pocket nines, pocket nines is by the way a theory fold. That's not even an exploit fold.
Yeah, I think nines is a slam dunk fold.
Um, I looked, I looked up, the, the theory is that jacks makes like one percent to table ICM, so it's like good. Tens is close, it's a hundred percent jamming, but it's close.
Yeah.
And
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's assuming slander man's three betting like every suited ace.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's, that's theory. That's theory, which is
No, he's not full, even, even if we run it. HRC is never gonna be full frequency unlike all of them. It's always
Full frequency, but
It's gonna be mixed.
Yeah, 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 but it's more than uh, you would see.
It's easy to find a suited ace, six blocker to three bet if you think the guy's out of line a little bit.
I mean, you say it's easy to find it, but like
He has all the chips. He's running the show.
I think he just got a hand.
He could, he could
Hard to say, Tim.
He could, he could, but still you're doing fine here with your jacks.
These are the spots that are so torturous, because it's like, yeah, he should have this, he should have that.
People, they know this is, this is not, this is not final table. Someone asked in the chat.
Clear, clearly printing in my mind here.
And then, and then you jam and you get snapped by kings and you're like, I fucking knew I should have just folded. God fuck.
Or you're like, what could I do? I had jacks. It's like, well, you can fold if, if you're up against a range that's stronger than yours, like you don't have to play.
I disagree. I think for this stack depth, the quality of this hand, you should always
I think making this kind of fold, you'll get a lot more deep runs than if you just say, well, I have jacks, twenty bigs, fuck it.
Running here in your hand, you, you're putting yourself to win that tournament.
And but also like hands like this, I'm so happy to raise against, raise over some of these people's opens. Like if I've been buttoned or cut off or whatever and someone opens ahead of me, I'm just happy to jam twenty bigs, because like, you know, I, I know that that's
Exactly, Tim, but it's the same here, almost. Just a little bit scary, you know?
Yeah.
But you're too short. Too short, the hand is too strong. It's not like
I think it's pretty good.
Yeah, I would always run it.
No, I mean, I think it's a pretty good fold.
Yeah.
I, I've thought about it. I, I tortured, I think I time banked and I decided that uh, I'm running with queens.
Yeah.
I mean, look at some other stuff about his uh
See this here, Tim? Do you see this seventeen here? That's the mark
Yeah.
The mark
No, but that's not what I usually run. I was just pretty card dead in this tournament. I mean, I'm usually running like twenty-seven or something. Um, Arnie, is, is Arnie not in the the poker stage for you Discord?
Well, I've, I'm in the What channel? City for you, but there's basically nothing there. Like, I'm not very good at this kind of stuff.
You gotta, um, you gotta, you gotta keep engaging until you get level five and then there's a couple more channels on level five.
Oh yeah, see how it says level five plus at the top of the aquarium?
Where are you, Arnie?
I, I'm the level three and I just, when I'm there, it says browse channels and then it's just got notifications leveling up system. So I don't know if I have to click on all this checkmark this stuff to see it?
Just uh, give him the regulars.
I don't see him.
Cause you invited me a couple weeks ago. What's your name in Discord?
Good question.
I think it's Arnie. Maybe I'm very computer literate in some cases here.
Why is Joe like no levels?
Hi, more, um, I, I want to keep defending my nitfold. This guy also, he plays some volume. But he hasn't really made money on ECR since twenty twenty-one. He's been kind of flatlined since twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, it's coming up as Arnie. I'll click on Arnie, three oh six, Arnie. That's what it's showing in the poker coaching. I'll say this, Tim. I think it's a fold that I'm not making enough. I'm in team Louis often. I'm like, well, I got jacks, fuck this guy and then I'm just out.
Where are you, Arnie? We got
Yeah.
Dings here.
Get my label as well, Louis.
All right, Louis, let me, let me share the screen real fast. You're labeling me up.
It's just showing me his, his Arnie.
You to see this. You blown me up for my twenty-four VPIP. That's just in that tournament where I was running super cold, twenty-four, twenty-four, alright, this year, twenty-four, that's the number.
Tim, I can't, I, I can't miss an opportunity to burn you like that.
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
I saw seventeen.
Mine's twenty-five. So.
Where's uh, what Galen, what's your uh, what's your
Oh, you're calling, you're calling the other net. You want to compare net versus net? You're calling, you're calling the other net. You want to compare net versus net?
Raise first in from button forty-five.
Versus net, Tim, come on.
Group by position. Alright, let's check.
Forty-five? Raise first from, from button?
Raise first.
Alright, Tim, you're just.
I want that above fifty. That's the thing I'm working on.
You're just assuming it.
Semi net.
Semi.
I have to add raise first, huh?
Yeah. It's an important stat though, and I.